Good evening. Today is March 9, 2021. The time is 5:36. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is now being called to order. I see that we do have a quorum. Councilman Carolina will lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand as we pray. We come to you, Desawa, asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and further to be the best we could be as good stewards of the land and resources for the citizens of Georgetown County. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. We've now moved on to the approval of the agenda. There's a recommendation to move item Report 15A forward on the meeting agenda. We have motioned to approve the agenda with a recommendation of moving Report 15A forward on the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Do not have to vote. All in favor of the motion being approved, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Our spotlight on nonprofit tonight is from Merle's Inlet 2020. And I think we'll have a presentation by Ms. Meredith Harrison, the executive director.
Yes, sir. How are you today?
We're great, thank you.
Good. My name is Meredith Mellon. I'm the executive director for Merle's Inlet 2020, and this is another Meredith, Meredith Elliott. She is our board chairman newly elected in January 2021. So we're here today to kind of give you a little rundown of what we do and why hopefully you find us important for the area. We're again grateful that you're having us here. Merle's Inlet 2020 is a community-based nonprofit organization whose mission is to promote the conservation of our natural environment while fostering local community and commerce. Our vision is to make Merle's Inlet a great place to live, work, and visit. We were established back in 1997 as a means to aid our community in infrastructure, water quality management, community events, and marketing. And oh boy, did our founders back then and volunteers back then surely make things happen. As you can see in your packet, there's a folder in front of you. As you can see from the list of accomplishments in your packet, Merle's Inlet 2020 has been a facilitator for good for our small, yet now thriving fishing village. We aided in the building of the Marsh Walk, the Merle's Inlet Community Center, the crosswalks through the Marsh Walk Business District, the creation of the Merle's Inlet Watershed Plan, the mowing and trash collection of the medians on Highway 17 bypass through Merle's Inlet, and of course, so much more. So how do we know this is what our community wanted and needed? So we regularly survey residents, business owners, and visitors of the Merle's Inlet area and ask the all-important question, "What would you like to see for the Merle's Inlet community?" We always get an overwhelming amount of responses. We then compile these responses and create a three- to five-year strategic plan. Our latest strategic plan is included in your packet in the folder. This strategic plan guides us in the selection of projects we want to accomplish, our regularly scheduled board meetings, and honestly, my day-to-day activities. Without our community members, we wouldn't be here. We run our organization solely on donations and grants. Thankfully, our community members see the value in what we do and continuously support us. Our ongoing efforts include water quality monitoring of all streams that end at Merle's Inlet, beautification of the medians through Merle's Inlet, regularly scheduled community cleanups, including the famous Spring Tide, community events such as the Merle's Inlet Christmas Parade, the Race for the Inlet, and the Merle's Inlet Oyster Roast, and so much more. We have been fortunate enough to have the support of all of you, especially our councilman, John Thomas, in the completion of our latest set of large projects. The first being the inlet-to-intercoastal multipurpose path, or as we like to call it, the eye-to-eye. You will see a picture of it in your packet. This eight-foot-wide biking-walking path that will be four miles upon completion runs from the inlet at the Marsh Walk and will end at the river at Wauka watching Marina. This project has been nothing short of a labor of love. We were fortunate enough to have amazing support from Georgetown County, as well as Tidlin's Health Hospital in the completion of the first mile. We have since had the remaining three miles surveyed, thanks to a grant from the Benel Foundation, had the path engineered, thanks to a donation of time and energy by Santee Cooper, and just received the permits from SCDOT and SCDHEC. We are now working on the funding for the remaining three miles and feel optimistic about its construction. The last project I would like to cover is one that's very near and dear to my heart, the revitalization of Morse Park, located on Highway 17 business next to the Hot Fish Club. Thanks to a grant from SCDHEC, as well as many donations from community members and businesses, we were able to secure the funding to do a complete overhaul of the park. You will see our plans in your packet. Merle's Inlet is in dire need of usable parks and recreation. We thought this area owned by Georgetown County was the perfect spot to put a park with its gorgeous views of the inlet and beautiful oak trees. We're in the final stages of construction and should be having a ribbon-cutting and dedication ceremony in the next month. So be on the lookout for your invitation. We've added a gazebo, a playground, a pervious walking path on the perimeter, benches, picnic tables, beautiful entranceways, and vibrant rain gardens to filter the stormwater runoff before it hits the inlet. It truly will be a reflection of our area and a tangible project that we should all be proud of. In closing, Merle's Inlet 2020 is working hard every day to make Merle's Inlet a great place to live, work, and visit through a variety of infrastructure and beautification projects, water quality monitoring efforts, and community events. We love our little town and hope to continue our partnership with Georgetown County and our community members. Thank you so much for your time.
Are there any comments from any of the council members regarding Merle's Inlet 2020? We thank you for all you do for Georgetown County.
Thank you.
County Council sets aside 30 minutes at the beginning of each meeting to allow for public comments. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do have five speakers signed up tonight. Each will have up to five minutes. The first is Tom Dunn.
Thank you for your time and kind attention, and thank you for your service. My name is Tom Dunn. I'm a resident of Paulies Island. I would like to address the ongoing county mask mandate, the extension of which you'll be voting on shortly. Referencing the mandate itself, you need to be aware, if you're not already, that you're standing on some very shaky legal ground. On March 27, 2020, Allen Wilson, the Attorney General of South Carolina, issued an opinion letter of guidance which addresses the power that municipalities have to enact emergency measures. His opinion, reaffirming an earlier opinion from 1980, concludes, quote, "Counties and municipalities should be aware that any unauthorized exercise of such emergency powers could subject these political subdivisions to liability at the behest of a private citizen with requisite legal standing." The opinion points out there is no enumerated power expressly conferred upon such political subdivisions as would reasonably include the extraordinary authority. The opinion also includes a reference to the following language from the Michigan Supreme Court: "If the governor does not elect to exercise any of the powers granted to him, local government is without power to act, since the field of permitted action has been entirely preempted by the state law." In short, this council does not have the jurisdiction to continue to declare a state of emergency or to enact a mandate as part of such a declaration. Only the governor has those powers, as granted by the South Carolina General Assembly. In continuing to extend this mandate, you are further subjecting the county and yourselves to potential legal challenges, not to mention pushback at the voting booths. I therefore urge you to cease and desist and vote no. One final quote from the Attorney General's opinion letter states, "With such extraordinary power lies the extraordinary opportunity for abuse." Let me suggest that this council has found and used exactly such an opportunity for abuse as this opinion outlines. By referencing South Carolina Code of Laws, Section 4-9-130 in your ordinance, which permits counties to enact emergency ordinances, this council has, beginning with the first renewal and continuing through all subsequent renewals of the mask ordinance, so stretched the meaning of the word "emergency" as to render it essentially meaningless. The Code of Laws limits such ordinances to a maximum of 60 days before renewal is required for a reason, so that they are enacted to address real, honest-to-goodness localized emergencies, such as floods, hurricanes, earthquakes, and genuine local epidemics. Events that the majority of reasonable adults would in fact classify as emergencies without even having to think about it. After more than a year, the COVID virus clearly no longer qualifies as a localized emergency, if it ever did, and this council does not get to arbitrarily continue calling it one, simply to justify the renewal of the mask mandate. American citizens have rights guaranteed by the Constitution, and following the first renewal of this mandate, you've been systematically abusing those rights and far exceeding the powers intended to be granted to you by state law. Powers such as these demand to be used soberly and circumspectly on a limited and temporary basis, not haphazardly with wanton disregard for the liberty of your constituents. Again, I urge you to cease and desist and vote no on the renewal of this ordinance. Briefly, let me sum up the science and the experts' current recommendations this way. One, there is no science that supports the wearing of masks by a healthy population in non-sterile environments to slow virus transmission. Two, the World Health Organization does not support or recommend widespread mask-wearing, and they never have. The National Institutes of Health does not support or recommend the mandating of wearing of masks. The CDC's own most recent data does not show the wearing of masks by a healthy populace achieves anything to reduce or slow the spread of the virus. In fact, a concluding phrase in the most recent CDC study on masks and mask mandates reads this: "Daily case and death growth rates before implementation of mask mandates were not statistically different from the reference period." In other words, no statistical difference did the mask mandates make. I'll close with this. I ask you all, what is the endpoint? When will you say enough? If not now, when? And based on what specific criteria? As more and more states and municipalities end their mandates and lockdowns, Georgetown County must join them. So-called emergency ordinances such as this one, extended indefinitely by local municipalities, were never intended to become the normal way of living and are not allowed by South Carolina state law. Thank you very much.
Vanessa Rawlins. Vanessa Rawlins. Fred Williams. Chris Anderson.
Can you hear me? Yes? How can you top that? I mean, how can you argue with what was just said? Can you hear me? Jeez, how can you top that? That's perfect. I don't even know what to say. But how did this begin? Positive PCR tests, right? Positive cases? On a disease that has proven to be 99.97% survival rate? Or down to what, 99.4 for the elderly? And we shut down the whole world? Oh my, oh my. Sir, thank you for opening in prayer. I'm your brother in Christ, and how important it is to invite the Lord Jesus Christ into these meetings. Anyone who knows the Lord understands that there is no separation of church and state. Praise God, boy. Silence in the face of evil is in itself evil. God will not hold us guiltless. Not to speak is to speak. Not to act is to act. Dietrich Bonhoeffer. Those who have the privilege to know have the duty to act. Brandy Vaughn. She was one of the top sales reps for Merck. She became a whistleblower. And because of her, one of the greatest drug recalls was... happened because she exposed the lies of the drug Vioxx that was killing literally thousands of people. Vioxx that was killing literally thousands of people. She began to get heat, I don't know if you've heard of her, but she was an outspoken whistleblower, and she began to get heat at her personal residence. She had security like Fort Knox. And she was given clues that she was being watched. So she wrote a letter. "I'm not suicidal. I love my son. I don't take antidepressants. I love my life. I have no reason to commit suicide." Oh, boy. December of last year, she was found dead on her kitchen floor. I think she was poisoned. She felt the heat. This is much bigger than a mask, much bigger than social distancing. This is worldwide. This is spiritual. Huge money's invested in this. Fauci. What is, he, uh, excuse me. Please forgive me. I'm not terribly organized like Tom was before me. He was at Moderna. I believe he is the founder of Moderna, which is one of the vaccine drug companies. Fauci, the highest-paid civil servant in the land, over $460,000 as the founder of a vaccine company. I would call that conflict of interest. The CDC is a private organization. It's not a government entity. Bill Gates has put in big money into CDC. I would call that a conflict of interest. Where vaccines began. William Avery Rockefeller became Dr. Bill Livingston, celebrated cancer specialist. William Avery Rockefeller. He changed his name after a bigamous marriage, got busted peddling snake oil and allegations of rape. He was known by the locals as Devil Bill. John D. Rockefeller's father. It's a quote, "I cheat my boys every chance I get. I want to make them sharp. I trade them with, I trade with the boys and skin them, and I beat them every time I can. I want to make them sharp." John D. Rockefeller and Bill Gates, Bill Gates's granddad, together began what is known today as Big Pharma. And most of us know that pharmakia in Greek means sorcery or witchcraft. Some of the funding by Bill Gates recently, 4.3 billion to the World Health Organization. As I stated before, CDC, 155 million, 53 million to a media outlet, a BBC over there in England, 53 million to a media outlet. I wonder what that's all about. 3 billion to GAVI, Global Alliance for Vaccination Immunization, 3 billion. You know what he, you know what he said his biggest, best investment is? Vaccines. 20 to 1.
Excuse me, Mr. Anderson, I hate to interrupt, but will you wrap up your comments, please?
Sir?
Will you wrap up your comments?
Yeah.
Thank you.
In short, this is spiritual warfare. We're being duped. And my question is to the council, if you're being fooled, would you want to know? I understand you volunteered, but with that volunteer comes great responsibility, and we are under all of you. You are obligated to shed the light of truth into the darkness of lies. Mr. Brandon Ellis has not been honest with you, and I strongly suggest there be an inquiry, investigation. I want to know why he's not telling the truth. Because if a common bricklayer could come up with hours of evidence stating to the contrary of positive PCR tests that don't exist, it was never meant to be used to find viruses. Our local Mr. Kerry Mullis, chemist, who invented the PCR test in 1993, got the Nobel Prize, specifically stated it is not used to find infectious diseases. Yet we used it. And I have, I mean, I could sit here for hours. Of course, I'm not going to do that, but I got all this literature saying, I mean, good Lord have mercy, they're not accurate. And we base all of this on PCR tests, which are fraudulent, is up to 97% fraudulent. And what's up with $13,000 for a positive test? Why are hospitals getting 13 grand and then 39 grand to put them on a respirator? I mean, come on. Did you know that the, I think it's 20-plus labs in Florida like six months ago got busted for inflating the numbers? They're cooking the books. They got busted. You know how they did that? Couple of nurses got suspicious, and they sent in tests that weren't even tested. They came back positive. There's a man in Florida on a motorcycle accident.
Mr. Anderson, you have exceeded your time. Will you please wrap up your comments, please?
Yeah. I wish I had a few hours with you. I wish I had all the information that I could give you and spend time with you, but obviously I can't do that. I'm just telling you it's a fraud, and it needs to end. Thank you.
Steve German.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and ladies and gentlemen of Georgetown. My name is Dr. Steve Garman. I'm a resident of Georgetown. My comment is that I do appreciate the comments of the two gentlemen before me, and I'm in agreement that we should lift the mandate of the mandatory mask-wearing. I'm not used to patting myself on the back, but I'm a board-certified internal medicine physician. I'm also the medical doctor for Horry County, Marlborough County, was Georgetown County, and Kershaw County detention centers. I'm also the medical director for Piedmont Care Center, which is in Spartanburg, which is an HIV, as you know, an infectious disease. And I've so much, I've also written a book that was published by the Department of the Navy called Introduction to Immunology. So I like to think sometimes I know what I'm talking about. It is my opinion that we should not make this an extension of the mandatory mask requirements. And if anybody has any questions they'd like to ask me later, I could tell you why, but I think it speaks for itself. Thank you for the opportunity to make this statement. Thank you.
That's the final speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we thank you all for your comments. We move on down to the approval of minutes. You all have received in your packets the minutes for our regular council meeting on February 23rd, 2021. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is, do you have who's second, Madam Clerk? Do you have who's second? Thank you. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please note it by raising your hand. All right, motion passed. There's one matter on the consent agenda which has been approved by virtue of the agenda approval process, which is the award of a professional service agreement associated with RFQU 21-03 to the Breitman Company of Conway, South Carolina. We move on down to resolutions and proclamations. We have a resolution number 21-01, Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse. Ms. Karis Langston?
Good evening, counsel. This is the Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse. The county will incur expenses for the construction of the new detention center prior to the issuance of the bonds. This document allows us to be reimbursed for those expenditures once the bond is issued. Without it, we would not be able to use the bond funds to pay for these expenditures. Staff requests that you approve this resolution so that the bond funds may be used for all the expenditures for the construction of the new detention center regardless of when they occur.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Are there any questions for Ms. Langston? Is there a motion to approve resolution number 21-01? It's moved by Mr. Anderson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Newton. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Oppose? Motion passed. We move on down to resolution number 21-03, a resolution in opposition of SC Senate Bill 200. As you may be aware, that the Senate recently passed a bill authorizing the use of the firing squad as a means of execution and elected means of execution. We have proposed resolution, resolution number 21-03, which says, "A resolution by Georgetown County Council opposing Senate Bill 200 and the use of a firing squad to execute a person sentenced to death. Whereas the South Carolina Senate has passed Senate Bill 200, which authorizes the use of a firing squad to execute a person sentenced to death, and whereas Georgetown County Council is concerned that execution in this manner is inhumane and cruel and unusual punishment, whereas, and whereas Georgetown County Council requests that the South Carolina House of Representatives refuse to pass this bill, and whereas should the South Carolina House of Representatives pass Senate Bill 200, the Georgetown County Council respectfully request that Governor Henry McMaster refuse to sign this bill into law. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Georgetown County Council that Georgetown County Council opposes Senate Bill 200 and requests that this bill not become law in the state of South Carolina." Resolved by Georgetown County this 9th of March, 2021. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 21-03?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve resolution number 21-03 opposing State Bill 200 and the use of a firing squad to execute a person sentenced to death.
It's been moved by Councilman Carolina. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion?
Chairman, did you say, this is a Senate bill, obviously. Now, the Senate passed this bill, but the House of Representatives did not pass this bill?
It's my understanding that it's being passed to the House of Representatives now for consideration.
Okay, but it, so it hadn't been to the Senate yet?
It has been to the Senate. The Senate has passed it, and it's been referred to the House of Representatives for their approval or denial.
I, this, we're getting an echo out here. The Senate, they did or did not pass it?
The Senate did pass it.
They did pass it, okay.
And we probably can ask legal counsel for some clarification on that to be certain.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council. The Senate did pass last Tuesday, third and final reading of Senate Bill 200. What happens at this point in town, that this bill, the language of this bill has crossed over and is currently before the House of Representatives in the state of South Carolina. They've referred the bill to committee but have not taken it back out, so a final vote has not been undertaken on the House version of it. Should the House approve it, then both chambers of the legislature will have approved the bill, and then it would go forward, assuming it doesn't have to go through what's known as a conference committee, there's any changes to it, and it would go forward for the governor's approval.
My opinion, and it's just my opinion, I believe we're a little bit early. This is a serious matter, and I would like to recommend that we, um, take a different approach on this and defer this until we've got a little bit more information.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor to approve resolution number 21-03. All in favor of the motion, let's be known by raising your hands. Oppose?
I'm going to abstain. As I said, I think it's a little early to be taking this vote.
Okay, thank you. Very common. Motion passed. I voted 6-1. 6-1 opposition. One abstention, I'm sorry. We move on down to second reading of ordinances. Ms. Langston?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Council. This is an ordinance to amend the 2021 budget ordinance to appropriate, to appropriate unanticipated insurance claim reimbursements, as well as appropriations for expenditures associated with the cyber intrusion, as noted in your attached ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, we ask that you please approve this ordinance for second reading.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Langston?
Ms. Langston, did you mention cyber intrusion?
Yes, sir.
At this point, where are we in the process of correcting the matter? And an idea of our expenditures for this, or is this covered by insurance? How are we handling this corrective matter?
I'm going to defer to Walt over there on that one.
I'll try to answer those, excuse me, can't talk with them asking. I'll try to answer those questions as best I can. So currently, we are, we have our internal network functioning, and it stood back up. We have all but a couple of servers, and we have about 50 servers. We have those servers back, reinstalled with all the data back on them. Folks can work on an internal network, but we do not have our external internet connectivity back open yet. Part of what this money is for is for different security layers that we need to put in place before we can expose ourselves to the outside world via an internet connection. What we have found is that the security that we had in place, although it was presumably state-of-the-art, hackers are much better than what we had, and we didn't have layers of security. We had what we thought was blanket coverage, but we need to, we need to add different layers so that if they get through one area of our system, that another area hopefully traps it in. That's what that money's for. The bulk of everything that has been done so far to restore our systems, all but a $10,000 deductible on our insurance policy, will be covered. This money is going to be for additional new things that we had not planned for. I don't want to call them out by name because I don't want hackers to know the exact systems we have, but there are at least four layers of security that we'll be adding. And then we have to replace some older equipment that would have normally been scheduled for replacement in the upcoming year, but this new software, new security features are going to overwhelm this older equipment, and it won't function properly just because of its age.
Do we have coverage right now that's taking care of the loss that we're experiencing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All, we had a $10,000 deductible, but everything else that's been done to date is covered by the insurance. But we do know we have some equipment that has failed. That may or may not be covered. We have to see whether we can restore it or not. But there will be, there is going to be some significant cost to, to get us back operational going forward. We can, the insurance will pay to get us back as we were. But now we are a target. We've already had several attempts at breaches since. We have been attacked, so that if we don't put additional security in place, better don't put additional security in place, better than what we had before, we're just opening ourselves up to be back in the same boat again at a later date.
At this point, have we a tally on the expense of the loss at this date?
I don't know that number right off the top of my head. It's going to be somewhere around a quarter million dollars at this point, which, as I said, is all, all but $10,000 is being reimbursed by the insurance company, but that, it's still ongoing because we aren't fully back up and operational yet, so when, when the dust settles, we can have an exact number.
And we will be further improving our insurance coverage?
Well, hopefully, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you. We have a motion for our second reading approval of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero eight.
Mr. Chairman, I do move for approval of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero eight.
Is there a second? Any discussion? And maybe we have a motion to amend ordinance number twenty-one dash zero eight to incorporate the proposed text since we had first reading at our last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I do-
Is there a second?
Second.
We now vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands. Oppose? We now vote, vote on the main motion. All in favor of second reading approval of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero eight with the amendment, please raise your hand. Okay, motion passes. We move down to ordinance number twenty-one dash zero nine. Mr. Tucker?
Good evening, Chairman, members of council. As I look at the podium, I see a number of you were in those seats when we passed this original ordinance in 2019, but just as a matter of summary, this particular fee and lieu agreement had two phases to the project. The first phase was the, to say renovation and rehab would be mild. The owner of the company purchased a very old building in very poor condition, committed to rehab that facility in the effort to create a new advanced manufacturing company in that space. He has made very good progress. I was actually in the building today. The renovations on the existing building are nearly complete. He is waiting on some equipment to come over from Italy, which is a little bit of a challenge right now, but that aside, phase one of that project is, is on track. That project will create seventy new jobs, and he will invest roughly $10 million in that part of the project. Phase two of that project was related to a request on our part for him to consider construction of two 30,000 square foot speculative buildings that would be subdivided into 10,000, 10,000 square foot units. So 30,000 square feet divided by three different tenants of, or three different units of 3,000, 10,000 square feet each. In return for that request, we offered to offer him a lease guarantee to help mitigate his risk. During that time and even through the present, we get a considerable number of calls for smaller industrial flex space, smaller manufacturing warehouse space, what would also be considered large commercial space. We have a, have a lack of inventory anywhere in the county of 10,000 square foot commercial flex industrial space. Basically, those units would be one big building under one roof of 30,000 square feet divided into ten smaller units, just a, just an empty box. But again, we miss out on a number of prospects in smaller companies because we don't have a place to put them. The owner of the company agreed to build those units and went through the planning and design process. As he got into the planning and design process, he realized he could actually put two 40,000 square foot buildings on that pad instead of two 30,000 square foot buildings. In doing that, obviously, it allows us more property to market. The property lays out better on the property, and it drives down the total cost of, or the average cost of the property per square foot, so it's more cost-effective once it's spread out over the entire project. So he has come back to us and asking us to amend our original commitment from 30,000 square feet to 40,000 square feet. So in essence, we will provide him, the original amendment, or the original fee and lieu provides that we give him a lease guarantee for five years at $6 a square foot for 30,000 square feet. The only number in that equation that changes in this amendment is we will go from 30,000 square feet to 40,000 square feet. I know that's a lot of numbers, so I'm happy to, I'll pause there and answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Tucker, what would, what is this investment cost that he's putting into these buildings?
The final budget on the new buildings isn't determined yet, but it's roughly going to be, we're estimating, going to be close to three and a half to four million dollars per building. So we, when we actually run through and we do the tax calculations or revenue calculations on this, we expect that between his advanced manufacturing company that he's going to build and these spec buildings that he's going to build, he's going to generate pretty substantial tax revenue, even in light of what's going on inside of these buildings.
Any other questions for Mr. Bryant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, I'm sorry.
Mr. Tucker, when you talked about phase one, you mentioned jobs. Can you tell us anything about that, please?
Yes, ma'am. So he will be hiring seventy jo, or he will be creating seventy jobs. He will be in the hiring phase here within the next couple of months. We expected that he would be fully operational at this point. Just the coronavirus has limited his ability to travel to do final testing on the equipment that is being produced in Italy. Those seventy jobs are going to run the gambit from a plant manager to, to entry-level labor, and all of those jobs would be generated here locally. It's not as if he's relocating folks into the community to take those jobs. These would all be jobs for county residents or for those that apply here locally.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Tucker? We all have heard the presentation by Mr. Tucker. Is there a motion for second reading approval of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero nine?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, will you approve ordinance twenty-one dash zero nine?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, understand. Any discussion? Is there a motion to amend ordinance number twenty-one dash zero nine to incorporate the ordinance text?
I make a motion, will you approve the new text?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands. Oppose? We'll go back to, we'll go back to the main motion. All in favor of second reading approval of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero nine with the amendment. Any oppose? Motion passes. We'll go down to first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number twenty-one dash ten, we'll just read, we'll just read ordinance number twenty-one dash ten into the record. Ordinance number twenty-one dash ten to rezoned a three-acre parcel located on the east side of Rose Hill Road at its intersection with St. Luke Trail and Rich Lane from Village 10,000 Square Feet Residential VR10 to one-acre residential R1. We're down to fifteen reports to council. Emergency ordinance number twenty-one dash eleven. Ms. Ellis?
Good evening, Chairman Moran, members of council. Before you again with emergency ordinance twenty-one dash eleven, which extends our state of emergency and our mask face covering ordinance. Substance of this ordinance mirrors the previous additions of it. Although we continue to make, you know, positive strides in combating COVID-19, staff does recommend that we extend this ordinance through April 27th. We believe this extension coupled with our increase in vaccine availability throughout the county and the region across the state will help us and be beneficial in supporting our return to work strategy that's been outlined by staff across the county. That target date for a soft target return to work date is April the first. That has been set by the county administrator and coordinated through the department heads. The additional time beyond April the first that's recommended in this ordinance will allow for some leadway and flexibility and allow us some latitude in the event that we do encounter some bumps along the way with that return to work, soft opening policy, as well as any ongoing or residual issues that we may experience from the previously mentioned cyber intrusion incident as we continue through that recovery process. Those are pretty much the key points of what's before you, subject to your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Are there any questions for Ms. Ellis?
Go ahead, Bob.
You go ahead.
Ms. Ellis, how many counties in the state of South Carolina have a mask ordinance?
There are currently ten face covering ordinances in place across the state.
Out of those ten, are there any counties, so that, that leaves about thirty counties without a mask ordinance?
Thirty-six, yes, sir.
Thirty-six?
Yes, sir. Forty-six counties.
That's, that's right. Out of those thirty-six counties, do all of those thirty-six counties have a worse COVID problem than Georgetown County?
Actually, we have seen, we're one of the few counties that has seen a, an improvement as our ordinance has been in effect. We were the first county to transition back out of a high incidence rate into a moderate incidence rate. Now there, I think, as of, as of yesterday, were eight counties that run a moderate incidence rate along with us. Of those, if my memory serves me correctly, six of those eight do have current fat, face covering ordinances in place.
Go ahead, Bob.
Mr. Anderson?
I have a few questions. I guess our benchmark now is April the 28th?
Twenty-seventh, yes, sir.
Twenty-seventh, okay. So that's forty-some days, whatever the math is. And what, what do you expect to transpire in the, in that time to where we may be able to rescind this order?
We hope to be able to, you know, have our return to work strategy completed at that point to where our buildings are back open full, in full capacity. We also hope that, you know, we will be at that point preparing to transition to phase one C of the vaccination plan based off of guidance from DHEC. We're currently, obviously, as you know, in phase one B, and our healthcare partners are making great strides in getting the vaccine out to those who wish to, to take it.
Well, the, the reason I ask that is that I'm, over the last year, you know, we've had so much data coming to us from here, there, and everywhere, and the science versus the politics, et cetera, et cetera. And a lot of the data is rather subjective, and I won't get into all those details, but it occurred to me that the only thing that I can really depend on as far as all the data that's out there about the number of people that have, have got, had COVID, the number of people that died of COVID, did they really die of COVID, all those statistics, and they're, and, and they're heavy. And I look at, the one reality is, is that whether you're 25 or 75, COVID will treat you from one end of the spectrum to the other, and that's going anywhere from being asymptomatic to dead, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
I mean, that's, that's the spectrum, but I also know, I have, I do believe this, that it's driven more by age than anything else. You know, at 25, your, your probability of making it through is 99, whatever, whatever the percentage is, where on the other hand, at 75, it's not that great. But again, the, the, the rates are driven by, and I'll give you one example. Let's say somebody comes into the hospital with a heart attack, and they're tested for COVID, and they're found to be positive, and the next day, they die of a heart attack. It's my understanding that that will go down as a COVID death, and I, I, I just, I just wonder about that. I see the doctor back there shaking his head no. So, but I'm just going on what, what I, oh, yes, okay. I'm just going on what I, what I've heard, but here's what I do know. I've had two shots, and I know I had those shots, and so what I'd like you to do, if you would, sir, is if you can tell me, like, in our next meeting in two weeks, how many people over 65 years old, as far as a percentage of their total population that's 65 and over, have been vaccinated? I think that's something that I can hang my hat on, if that makes sense.
Yes, sir.
And I'd also like to know, for staff's sake, as far as deciding when we're going to, we're going to take, we're going to lift this mask ordinance, if we could, if we could know what the number should be to where we feel comfortable, you know, maybe it's 90% of that age group that's been, that's been vaccinated, 95%, whatever you come up with. I'd like to know what those two figures are when we come back to the council meeting. Can you take an action to do that? Is that possible?
Yes, sir, and I can tell you that of the 11,600 odd vaccinations that have been administered in, in Georgetown County to date, the, the data that I have access to says that about 9,600 of those, or 80% of the total vaccines have been administered to folks 65 and older in that most vulnerable population.
I don't know, you know, I don't know how many people are in that age group, so-
Certainly.
I'm, I'm looking for-
We can, we can pull the demographic data for you and do a comparison.
That's what, that's what I'd really like to know.
Yes, sir.
So, and, and I understand, I've seen letters on both sides of this, but I'm just giving you my opinion based on the data that I have, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to the day that we can lift this thing, and I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I, I look forward to seeing that data, and I'll, I'll, I'll take, take what we're doing here tonight into consideration. The vote's going to come up, and I'll, and I'll vote. Thank you.
I've got a question or two as well for council. This is more for the edification of informing the public, but because the state has lifted the mask mandate, the county is still free to impose or lift ordinances as it chooses, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. The, earlier this evening, you heard a gentleman talk about a, a March 29th, 2020 Attorney General's opinion as it relates to the governor and the emergency ordinance and the powers. The main focus and thrust of that particular opinion was the ability for counties to exempt or override what the state was doing versus what the state was doing and what a county can do. Long story short, pursuant to South Carolina Code 4-9-130, this council and councils across the state can pass these emergency ordinances because they have been authorized by the Home Rule Act to do so in order to protect life and liberty. The, the underlying thrust of that main opinion was that, that it's the governor who has certain specific duties and responsibilities, and they can't conflict, i.e. the county can't do something more than what the governor's doing, but in this instance, the county can directly continue to pass an emergency ordinance, even though the governor has passed, or has taken action via executive order in slightly different directions and capacities based upon his statutory duties and responsibilities.
Okay. Secondly, if I may, the, if the county were to lift its ordinance, businesses may still do their own thing. They may still require masks before you enter the business, as for example, private business.
That is correct. It would be a, a situation on a case-by-case basis for those businesses based upon their internal operations and what they require, as in, for example, like I said, to come in with a mask or not come in with a mask. It would be, they could have those particular provisions in place.
Okay. And finally, similarly, can the, the county or a public body impose or exercise its policy- And finally, similarly, can the county or a public body impose or exercise its policy to, on its employees, to continue to wear masks or not wear masks?
That particular policy as it relates to employees gets into a slightly different area. I would have to give a little bit more research because there is some, and before I could give you a full opinion, because now we're getting into some of the employment issues as opposed to general health, there are different standards that apply as relates to reasons by which those individuals could not or would not particularly wear a mask. So, Mr. Goggins, I'm not trying to avoid your question, but there are slight differentiations between employees and that employee employer relationship as opposed to trying to govern the health and safety of the public as a whole. So that would be something, would do a little bit more research and digging into before I could give you what I would say is a definitive answer.
Okay. I was just thinking, like, as a business can have its own policy, the public body could have its own policy for, independent of whatever the ordinance may be.
Correct. And again, even inside of that particular business, and make it clear, I'm not trying to give them legal advice.
Understand.
They have means and methods by which they would need to also make sure that they don't run afoul of any of those regulations as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to Mr. Ellis?
My concern is this. Appreciate Dr. Gorman and other comments, and we now have three vaccines in place and to err on the side of precaution and safety for the people. And this past Sunday, headline news on the Post and Courier, it was entitled, "The Moment We Realized Everything Had Changed." And at this point in time, to see what the results will be after the vaccines have been implemented, and we look to see what the numbers will be, we're approaching spring. We're going to have travelers coming into the Grand Strand area. They're talking about the possible mega super spread come spring break in Florida, Georgia, South Carolina. And to avoid moving in haste, and this is akin to, in many cases, a dress code. You can have a sign on the door to a business that says, "To enter, you must have shoes on." To enter, you must have a shirt on. And we're going to have to see how this all plays out. I mean, we can move too fast. We hear of all the variants that are popping up all over the United States. Things are morphing and remorphing. So my position is to err on the side of precaution and protection. We don't know what's going to happen when these kids get back in school. You know, we've been kind of laissez-faire, and your teachers are first line people. Your cafeteria workers, your bus drivers, anyone going into the school facility is subject to, not everybody's concern in maintenance and addressing the issue of this COVID, it's not consistent. So we can defer, we can vote tonight or whatever, but there are major things that we need to really consider as we move forward.
Thank you.
And one other thing, we have never heard from the morticians. That's the thing. And if you were to ask morticians here and let them give you the count of the number of the increase in their business, maybe not good business, they're making money, but a lot of people are dying. I've experienced that in my family. I had a cousin who was a mortician in Florida, 70 years old. He passed a month ago. While down there, I did not go to the funeral, that there were 15 people that were tested COVID. So it's still floating out there. And until this, the vaccine protocol takes place, and the majority of the people have been vaccinated, we're down to 1B right now, we're not talking about kids, but there are a lot of things to consider.
Staff is recommending that we adopt emergency ordinance number 21-11. Is there a motion for approval of emergency ordinance number 21-11?
I move to approve emergency ordinance number 21-11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've been against the mandate since we first started it. It's no secret about that. As you've heard here tonight, there's different, if you've got 50 scientists say masks are good, you can get 50 scientists saying they don't make that much of a difference. I'm not qualified enough to decide whether masks are good or not. I wear mine. My family wears theirs. I've lost two family members to COVID-19. Both of them wore their masks. But I read an article out, a survey, where approximately 40% of the people that wear masks wear them improperly. Most of the people that come in here with masks tonight, and even us, we put them on improperly, we took them off, we're going to put them back on, and without washing our hands, which they recommend you to do. The 36 counties that had no mask mandate, why aren't their numbers skyrocketed? Why aren't those numbers just totally off the chart? They're basically all the same. We have counties with lower numbers than us that didn't have a mask mandate with the approximate population as ours. The decision that we make to require residents of Georgetown County to wear masks under this mandate, I think should be left up to the individual. If you leave, if we do not pass the mandate tonight, tomorrow, most of you or all of you are going to wear your mask when you go into a business and when you leave your home. Why don't you think the residents of Georgetown County are smart enough to wear their masks without you having to tell them? Are we that much smarter than everybody else in Georgetown County just because we were fortunate enough to get elected to hold these offices? No, we're not. So this mask mandate, we're going, this time next year, guess what? There's still going to be COVID-19. Are we going to continue this on for two years? Leave it up to the, there's, nobody knows better how to make a successful business than a business owner. If that business owner requires masks to be worn in his or her store, then leave it up to that individual. If they don't require masks, and people that won't go into a store that does not require masks, they're going to change it because they're not wanting to leave, they're not wanting to lose that amount of business. It's getting, it's getting to now kind of like the litter on our highways. There's so much, there's so much litter that you tend to not see it because it's there every day. Same is going on with the mask. I went into a restaurant Friday night, me and my wife was wearing our masks, about 75% of the people that walked in before and behind me were not wearing a mask. And, but if we're going to pass this ordinance to make ourselves feel better, by all means, let's go ahead and pass this mask mandate once again, make ourselves feel better like we're doing something. We should pass a resolution encouraging the ones that need to wear masks, wear them, wear them properly. Don't be cutting holes in them to smoke a cigarette, and don't be pulling them down below your nose. Wash your hands and social distance. Let's do what we should have done from the beginning. But I am totally against the mandate.
Thank you. Are there any other, any further discussions? We have a motion on the floor for approval of emergency ordinance number 21-11. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Close again? Is it two or three? One, two, two opposed. There are two opposed and four in favor, and one abstention.
He raised his hand.
He raised his hand? Okay, so three opposed.
Believe it or not, I raised my hand.
Okay, I didn't see his hand, I didn't see it. Okay. So it's four in favor and three opposed, that's what I have. Is that what?
Five to two.
I'm sorry?
Five to two.
Five to two, oh, you voted in favor, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, it's five to two, I'm sorry. Motion passes. Okay, I'm sorry, motion passes. Are there any further business to come before, is there any further business to come before, Maybe a motion to adjourn? Okay, we stand adjourned.